Okay. Yeah, because the last time basically was the nature of affairs.
There you go.
Yeah.
Ready to run?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll call a meeting to order, please. Plant Commission, roll call.
Faino?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Mar?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Schnelly?
Here.
Smithback?
Here.
Stevenson? And Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg, and welcome to the Plant Commission. We're pleased to have you here to talk about the signed ordinance. I'd like to call the Village Board meeting to order and request a roll call, please.
Balle? Udrow?
Here.
Rethour?
Here.
Purnier?
Here.
Wool?
Here.
State?
Here. Thank you. It's all yours, Greg.
Okay, first item is the public appearances and the item A is a Plant Commission public hearing for Oregon High School at 456 North Perry Parkway in the middle school, 601 Pleasant Oak Drive for a conditional use permit request. At that time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there any input? Might as well come back and come on.
So I'm not sure if there's any input for the, from our point of view or questions that you have. We tried to address, I think, the concerns the last time we met.
Yeah.
I think what we'll do is just basically ask you to come up and we'll have, and we have a memo here from our planner with recommendation memo that was dated the 10th of December for Mr. Slavny. And is there any questions anybody has on that? Any clarifications you're asking for? It's on the back of the notice of public hearing request.
Everybody have these? Does everybody have the drawings in front of them? Okay.
The drawings are, you don't have all the, all the documents in there. Only certain parts. You've got civil.
Correct. Yeah, this, the, the, uh, documents provided were an excerpt from the full construction documents, so electrical drawings, plumbing, demolition of architecture, all that kind of stuff was not included.
Correct.
Just for sake of saving a tree at least.
All right.
Greg, I had a question on the memo.
Yes.
I noticed that it says it's under the same conditional use permit. So does that imply that we'll be voting one vote for the entire project, for both projects?
And it's, it's, it's addressed as that way. It's shown on the, on the agenda that way, and I believe that's the way we're gonna have to, yes.
Although, we were thinking that when we actually draft the resolutions approving the conditional use permits for the Village Board, we would do one for the high school and one for the middle school.
And I was thinking maybe we should, I'd rather, can we address it? Even though it's, it's announced that way, can we still address it separately? Two different motions?
Yes.
Okay, and that's, thank you. That's what we'll probably do. One for each, you know, middle school and one for the high school.
When we met last time, we sent you a link away with just sort of a list of a few items. Can you just walk us through what the changes were that you did to the site and to the building and everything else?
Sure, absolutely. Uh, I guess starting with the middle school.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Uh, weren't we, high school first one?
And that's fine. Whichever the commission would prefer. So one item that was referenced by the Planning Commission was the inclusion of additional bike racks. And so we have included, if you'll, I guess they appear on sheet C101, and then again on sheet C103. We are maintaining the area of bike racks, um, I was gonna say directly south west of the building footprint. And we're also including, uh, kinda directly south of the PAC addition, another location for bike racks, um, thinking that depending on the way students would approach, the way visitors would approach the building, uh, that we can, more convenient to have a rack kind of on either side of the main entrance. Uh, another thing that was noted, um, and this came through discussions with the Department of Public Works as well as the Fire Department, was the need for additional fire lane at the main entrance to serve the Fire Department connection. And so that has been extended, um, directly west of the building. We've extended what we're kinda terming the parent drop-off zone, but will also function as a fire lane. We've extended that further to the south. And then that connects to, unfortunately, it's not shown on sheet 103, but it does appear. So if you're staying on sheet 103, I can, I can describe the location to you. So, uh, the main entrance, and then you follow that down, uh, kind of down to the southwest corner of the building, kinda directly east of the bike racks. If you head slightly north, the building pushes to the west slightly, about two or three feet, right in that location is where the Fire Department connection is. And so we've maintained fire lane both on the north and the south side of that to allow convenient access for the Fire Department. One other thing that isn't noted on these plans, um, but was verified with the district recently this week, was the final location for a new flagpole adjacent to the main entry. So that's gonna be included, um, kind of, if you're looking where the Fire Department connection is, head a little bit further to the north where you see that, uh, second area of the building that pushes a little bit further to the west. The flagpole will be located right there in that location, either in the landscape or in the sidewalk, uh, adjacent to the raised bed. If you flip a few pages back in the documents, uh, looking on sheet A2.1, uh, it's a little bit difficult to see in this elevation, um, but on, in view one on sheet A2.1, uh, you see in, uh, at the very top of the drawing, uh, the gymnasium box. In front of that is the office and then shell space, uh, in the high school office area. And then you'll see kinda at the center of that drawing where the main entry canopy element appears. We have made a revision. If you'll kinda follow the roof line of the canopy further to the left of the drawing, and that's to the north on the plan. We've combined those two roof elements so that the canopy flows into the lobby and then both from the interior and the exterior, um, that roof is, uh, has a gentle slope to it. Again, trying to highlight this area, uh, as the new main entrance, uh, both through the architecture and through the plantings and landscape features. Trying to think other areas to note. If you flip to sheet C107, I'll just note the other location for the second Fire Department connection, um, because we are, we have two independent sprinkler systems, one for the academic addition and one for the, uh, PE athletic addition. So one for the addition to the northeast and one for the addition to the south. And so directly on the north face of the building, um, for the academic addition on sheet C107 is where the Fire Department connection will be located. So the suggestion is that the existing drive that is on district property would function as the fire lane and then would allow convenient access to that Fire Department connection. If you flip basically to the end of the packet, uh, the last page, sheet E101, is site photometrics. I don't believe that was presented as part of the packet during the preliminary, uh, review, but is presented now, um, as part of the Planning Commission's final review. Page right before that, sheet L104, um, shows some, uh, fairly significant modifications that were made to the landscaping in the courtyard that will be created between the existing building and the academic addition. What we're proposing is a crush limestone path, maintaining, uh, as many mature evergreen trees as possible. I believe that number is right around four or five right now that can be maintained due to, uh, changes in grade around the addition, uh, as well as just, um, construction activities around there make it difficult, uh, to save many of those trees, but we are maintain, attempting to maintain and save as many as we can. Uh, and then also creating, uh, with that path, uh, two kinda separate areas, uh, both for student contemplation, uh, and, uh, any educational activities that students or staff might wanna engage in. On the outside, I'm gonna turn that to the north and to the east of, uh, the academic addition. We've significantly reduced the scope of landscaping, uh, again, seeing as that is largely the back of the building and is screened from Highway 14 by, uh, a series of mature trees already to the east of the parking lot. We've reduced there in an effort to minimize maintenance for district staff and, uh, and in an attempt, um, to more properly allocate referendum dollars, uh, into the, uh, building and educational components instead of solely, instead of on, um, uh, some of the landscape elements that were currently shown there or previously shown there. Apologies. Uh, that was a little bit long-winded, but at high school, I think that kinda covers things that have changed, um, between the last time we are, we are in front of the commission. I don't know, Andy, if there's anything else, um, that you recall was commented on?
Not that was commented on. We did work with Public Works. We, we had a, uh, fire, uh, water line, actually, that went through, actually, the, it's the current fieldhouse. So where we are rerouting that around and creating a new loop, um, for, for fire protection around the south end of the building and basically dead-ending the current water pipe that goes under the current fieldhouse. That was a request by the Fire, uh, Public Works.
So you can reference that on sheet, excuse me, sheet C300, kind of in the middle of the packet, the overall utility plan, uh, as Andy noted, uh, the new water line, noted with the hatch to W that runs to the south of the proposed, uh, PE, uh, athletic addition and then kinda snakes between the addition and the existing track, uh, back to an existing hydrant, uh, just to the north of, of the track.
I think we also added a bike path, or bike rack on the north end of parking lot. Yeah, page here.
That was previously shown.
Oh, was there? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Before.
What's the final determination on materials? What are, um, what are you going with for color palette materials? You've got a, uh, wet cast panel, which I don't know what that is.
Sure, sure. Wet cast versus hollow core is, I guess, uh, a description of how the precast materials are created. So we have both types of walls, um, on this project. One is, uh, kind of slit-formed in a long section and then they cut to length as needed the precast concrete manufacturer will. The other is, uh, formed up and poured to the specifications for whatever piece that they're casting. They will have, uh, similar texture and color, uh, as identical as possible, uh, between the two different manufacturing processes. So very similar to the, um, PAC addition with the two different, uh, tones of concrete texture. And then the masonry material will match the, um, darker brown that appears currently on the existing fieldhouse, although that will be completely covered, um, and appears further to the north on a lot of the, uh, existing academic exterior elevations.
So both the concrete products are hollow core products, one just has veneer to it, so it's a tilt-up product?
Correct. All, the wet cast versus hollow core, it still is a precast tilt-up product, correct?
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions?
One other question, sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
Mike, I saw on the landscape plan, they've got gum trees called out. Is that an issue or not?
Not those.
Okay.
I saw a note about a future alteration or additions in G0.2, the far southwest part of the new addition. Can you explain what that's about?
You're on G0.2, you said?
Correct.
Are you in the top left-hand corner or?
Bottom right.
Bottom right.
So the overall second floor plan, the alternate plan there?
Yeah. So, uh, we're obviously going into this and there's a lot of variability with building climate, those types of things, so we're being cognizant of that. The upstairs of the office, which is going to be meeting space room, potentially where our board meetings would be, but also professional development type thing, right now that's an alternate. So we would only finish that if the bids came in.
That's, you understand, that's in the bidding process.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that footprint was there or not.
Yeah, the footprint's there. If, nothing else, it'll be shelled in, um, so it just won't be finished.
Correct. And the base bid structure and exterior wall glazing, things like that will be provided. The alternate would be to finish the space, including any interior partitions, interior finishes, and then electrical and HVAC requirements.
Okay. And then I just had a couple landscape questions. I actually marked them up on C202, so if you can reference that. One question I had was about the lighting. You've maintained all the lighting on axis except for the light at the entry where the cars enter the south parking lot. Is there a particular reason why that is not on the same axis as the other lights?
My assumption is, and that's disproven as I flipped to sheet L100, um, I was wondering if there was a, um, a, a tree specimen that was there, kind of in that parking island that would offset that. That is not the case now. I believe it may have been in the past. That's why that may have been shifted. I can review that with our, uh, electrical consultant and, and suggest that we maintain those, uh, along the same north-south access. I'm not entirely sure why that, that's currently shown the way it is. I have to connect with our, our consultant.
Is the, um, bus drop-off area then in this, on the south lot?
It would be shifted to the north. Correct, Andy? The buses?
The buses, yes. The buses are good.
Buses will all be north.
Yep. So it's gonna, it's gonna be flipped from current setup.
Okay. I, I was curious about the planters, because there are no planters on the north side. Is that a budget thing or is that to emphasize the south as the main entry?
Both of those things.
Okay.
We're trying to minimize cost and also, uh, focus everything kind of on the south side to, to make sure that people know where the front entrance is.
So then the other thing I didn't notice is any trash receptacles yet, or is that something that's not typically included? Do they usually show those sometimes?
I believe we did show them as
Am I just missing?
Of the, um, improvements that were made to purview Netherwood. A lot of times, again, that is a, um, a, a budget factor and allows the district to provide, um, uh, pieces of, uh, site furniture or site equipment that, uh, they can best maintain. So we would suggest that those are located kinda near each of the main entrances, um, very similar to, I know that there's a, a trash can, uh, kind of just on the north side of the PAC that, that the district does maintain. So the suggestion would be that the district locates those as necessary and may I'm good.
Good?
Good.
Mike, did you have any comments?
As necessary.
Other than what you've given us in your memo?
No, the, well, just very briefly, the, uh, the lighting plans are in full compliance, thank you. And Jeff is still, um, looking out the final details on the stormwater with the, uh, the district's consultant. And I think we just need to make note of that in the minutes that we, uh, we talk about.
And that's at the middle school, correct?
And that's, and that's one of the notes you make in your final recommendation here.
Yes.
Okay. Good. Any other input from the public? Okay, we will close the public hearing at this point. Thank you. Move on to discussion, pass recommendation to the Village Board. We've all seen us a number of times. They've come back and they've done everything we've asked, so I think it's, it's pretty clear, it's a pretty clean, uh, conditional use permit request. Mr. Slavny, again, I'll refer you back to his memorandum from December 10th, and he has, um, essentially six items that he lists on the recommendation that should be included, and we can include those in the, in the motions typically by just including his memorandum in the, um, in the, for the motion to the Village Board. There are a couple extra items under his recommended, uh, conditions. He also has two line items, which is staff approval of the stormwater management plans and any other requirements identify the village staff, Plant Commission, Village Board. I think we've identified everything we have to at this point, and essentially it'll be the stormwater management. So again, if we incorporate his memorandum into the, into the motion, it'll be all encompassing.
We're doing a motion just for the high school?
We're gonna do, I, I think, and I believe what we should do, because again, as mentioned before, when it comes down to actually issuing the conditional use permits, they're gonna issue the one for the high school separate from the middle school, and we should do it that way. So if we wanna do the, uh, high school first, that'd be appropriate unless we have some more discussion, any questions we have. Otherwise, we need a motion recommending Village Board approval of the certify, or the conditional use permit, uh, with the incorporating the memorandum by Mr. Slavny of December 10th, 2015.
So move.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item would be then a, uh, motion to the Village Board recommending Village the, uh, conditional use permit for the middle school with the same stipulation.
I think we have some discussion on that first.
That's fine. We'll do that. I'm gonna talk about that before we go into motion. Let's do that. Okay?
So I've, I've really struggled with the middle school project, the idea of separating the addition from the main building. Could you talk about what the logic is behind that?
Sure. And to clarify your question.
To pull that off as a separate element.
Sure.
Uh, as opposed to using the existing west wall as one of your structural walls and building from that?
Mm-hmm. Uh, one of the major concerns that we would have, um, uh, if that schematic approach were undertaken, uh, was, would be the elimination of natural light into, uh, for existing classrooms and any of the new square footage that would be created directly adjacent to that, uh, west, existing west elevation. By separating, uh, those two components, new construction and in the existing building, we're creating kind of our, our, what we have termed as semi-courtyards. They're not fully enclosed, but on three sides they are, uh, and then still do allow for, uh, some natural views and natural light into, uh, new construction spaces and into the existing building. One other element to consider, um, would be, um, uh, necessary firewalls. So even if we were to push new construction square footage, uh, directly adjacent to the existing building, um, we would still, uh, for all practical purposes, be creating an exterior wall in that location for a firewall to separate existing construction or the existing building from our new construction. So while it would save veneer material, we're not really saving structural material.
Okay.
Can you tell us, um, what you're looking to do, uh, for materials, please, on this one?
Mm-hmm. Uh, I know this was a discussion in the preliminary review, um, so here at the addition, uh, the, we would be looking to use a, uh, concrete veneer product, um, so it would, uh, not be a move to match the existing, uh, red tone of the clay masonry product on the building, um, but would contrast it, um, both on the light end and on the dark end. So the proposal would be to have a, um, I'll say, a, a brown and a cream, uh, two concrete veneer products that would be utilized for the new construction. We would use those to identify the major volumes, uh, kinda separating the science and steam area, uh, from the music area, uh, and then when we have recessed areas of the building, i- is where we would transition, uh, the color of the exterior material. I apologize, I did not include a color rendering, uh, in the commission's packet this evening, but, uh, we do have that, uh, on hand, uh, and I, I guess could potentially throw it on the screen or, uh, email it, uh, as, as requested.
So simply put, the low roof will be one color and everything with the parapet height above that is another color? Take a look at sheet G02, for instance. We've got that backside perspective, or then even on G01, we've got the frontside perspective.
That's largely correct. If you're looking on G0.2, uh, the new construction space, uh, to the north where the music rehearsal rooms are the larger volumes, uh, where the building is, is recessed, um, the, looking at the building from the west, uh, yeah, I guess, actually flipping back to G0.1, if you see that we've included a perspective view there, um, so looking at that, the recessed areas, the west portion only of those recessed areas in the music classrooms, uh, we would suggest a transition of color and material there as well. So the larger faces where we have, uh, our windows that shift in the vertical direction as you move across the face, those would be the brown veneer material, uh, and then the recessed area, uh, just the single face of that, not three sides of the recessed area, just the first face, uh, would transition to the lighter color. Uh, and then moving further down, um, the area, uh, that, of the roof that sticks up slightly higher where we're including our mechanical mezzanine and, and the toilet rooms, uh, that would be cream color as well as everything to the south of that. So the tech ed classroom, uh, the tech ed laboratory, and then all the science classrooms and, uh, walls adjacent to the greenhouse, and the knee walls for the greenhouse would all be the tan veneer material, or cream. I apologize, I'm using a couple different terms. I know the Planning Commission's prior comments, um, uh, questioned that approach. Uh, we reviewed it further, uh, both internally with our design team and with the district, and, uh, somewhat to celebrate, I suppose, um, the separation kinda between the two buildings and the very, um, uh, different geometric language that the new construction has to the existing building. That's why we thought it was more appropriate, uh, to suggest, uh, a contrasting material instead of looking to match the veneer material of the existing building.
I appreciate that there's some logic to it as you go through it. I respectfully have to disagree with, with, with your design team. I think it would be nice to have even, it's a block product. It's mindless. I mean, it's simple, it's horizontal, you lay it up. I shouldn't say mindless. It's, it's simple. It's easy to, to do. And, and if you're gonna lay a course of tan on, on the, the tan, for instance, which I think makes sense because it's very rudimentary, everything follows through. think makes sense because it's very rudimentary, everything follows through on that, I like that logic, but to tie something back with a horizontal stripe in there with the brown to mimic something on the existing building would, is a lost opportunity. That's just my opinion. I have no problem with the sort of curved elements being a blocky element, different contrast in color, I like that, it makes sense to me, again, I just think that that's a lost opportunity.
Yeah, that's a point well taken, we'll review that an additional time with the district, and if any revisions are made, we'll be sure to communicate them to the commission.
Thank you.
I'd like to bring up the west elevation, the music room, the window treatment there. Can you talk a little bit about, I'm looking at A2.0, elevation number two. You have staggered height windows, can you talk about the intent there?
Sure. One request that we got from building staff was that very low sills on all windows were not desired due to perimeter furniture that they would include, or to minimize distractions or kind of high contrast between solid wall and window opening for students, especially with the location of the conductor. So if you look at, actually, elevation three on that same sheet, so A2.2, northeast elevation number three, you'll see that in the center of that wall, we're actually excluding any windows, and the windows closest to the center are, have the highest sills, and that's to minimize that and highlight the conductor in, because that will be their location in the bathroom there. Shifting back to the west elevation that you referenced, view number two, the move to vary both the head and the sill and the intermediate horizontal mullion on the windows in the music rehearsal rooms was made both to engage students more, something a bit more playful along that elevation, and something that also references the musical elements and the music staff in that location. So we've kind of treated five different datums that are pulled across that elevation, and then adjusted each of those three elements, sill, head, and intermediate mullion, kind of across that staff line.
And I thought that worked very successfully, going along with the kind of music analogy, which is what I thought was the intent. Those facades are still very large and tall, and I'm just wondering if any attempt was made to stagger the parapet heights? The comment was made at the last meeting, and I think appropriately so, that the most interesting part of this addition is kind of hidden on the backside of the building. And that would be a way to, at minimal cost, celebrate a little bit more what's happening on that curved addition by staggering, you know, stepping the parapet heights on those facades and maybe breaking up some of that kind of monotonous space. Just a suggestion to consider.
Yeah, that's a point well taken. I know we'll have to be considerate that we don't affect our structure in that location because as we introduce different roof levels, I think that would provide an added complication both for drainage and construction of the roof, but the ability to either include a parapet or a kind of a scupper condition in some of the areas, it's something that we'll explore with the district.
Go ahead, get some scum.
Yeah, I noticed you had a number of elevations and perspectives, which are always helpful. There was not a perspective of the front view as seen from the street, and there wasn't even an elevation showing the front view of the greenhouse. You can see two end views of it. Can you talk a little bit about the greenhouse and what the construction is? It looks like it's got a masonry veneer around the bottom, but it didn't really indicate what the other materials were.
Correct, yeah, so the greenhouse is visible, staying on sheet A2.0, and the west elevation, view number one, and then the east elevation, view number seven. In both the south elevations, view number nine and view number 13, it's shown as dashed, and that's somewhat to acknowledge the separate component of it. We, really, you're treating the greenhouse as exterior space, so the wall that you see in the south elevation, that would be the wall that separates the greenhouse from each of the classrooms, is detailed as an exterior wall with cavity and insulation. The greenhouse itself will be metal frame with polycarbonate panels. It will contain, as noted, veneer, a concrete veneer knee wall to approximately two feet. It will also contain a precast cap on that, so from grade, looking at the greenhouse elevation, you'll have the concrete veneer, precast cap, and then the metal frame and polycarbonate panels for the greenhouse.
Good? Yes, sir.
I was wondering if there'd been any consideration for skylighting in any of this, and that you suggested looking for outside lighting, is that appropriate or efficient in this kind of construction?
I think for this plan, skylighting would be somewhat redundant. We do have, our corridor here is single loaded, and by that I mean that there are only connections to adjoining rooms on one side of the corridor, and on the opposite side, we have large areas of windows. I guess that's a little bit difficult to see in plan. If you were to look at, again, sheet A2.0, the east elevation, views number four and seven, you can see those large windows, and those are looking, or would connect the semi courtyards to the corridor. And then in each one of our classrooms as well, we have large areas of exterior glazing, so I believe that we've achieved appropriate natural lighting in each of the spaces without the need for skylights.
We do use skylights at the middle school, at the high school, trying to take some interior areas that don't have any natural light and trying to get some lighting there. I think they might be as alternates.
Correct.
Again, budget is a concern, but the hope is that we can get that in there.
One thing to note, a change from the last time that we were with the planning commission, sheet C101, we've further reduced the area of asphalt directly to the southwest of the addition, and in that way eliminated a small number of existing parking stalls. This was not viewed as a concern by the district, even with those stalls in evening or weekend events, vehicles will be parked on Pleasant Oak, even with, even including those handful of existing stalls, it was not deemed as necessary for day-to-day function for the district.
Okay.
I'm curious about the courtyards and the anticipated use of the courtyards. The north courtyard is accessible only from the exterior, and the south courtyard has a large exit coming from it. Is that necessary for egress, that that's there?
Correct. Exiting to the south is part of our emergency egress path, the kind of link corridor connection between the existing building and new construction. We have a series of emergency exit doors in that location, and so we needed to maintain a clear path out. I know at one point we did propose exterior doors in a similar location that exited to the north, into that north kind of semi courtyard. That was discussed at length with the district and with building staff, and in lieu of trying to augment or provide appropriate hardware on the gate to the north of that north courtyard to maintain our required exiting through that courtyard, we elected to make that exterior access only to improve security and still allow student access from an adjacent building exterior door as an easy connection to the north of that exterior courtyard.
And how is it anticipated that those courtyards are going to be used as a part of class going out there, or is it just a...
I know one thing that we have noted with the district, you'll see that two landscape plans, sheet 100, and then sheet one, or excuse me, L100, and then L101 are both provided. L101 locates additional perennials and ornamental grasses that will not be included in the general construction project. The goal there being to reduce the landscape budget to protect the district moving into the bidding climate, and also to allow future projects for students and staff in, to augment the landscaping in each of the courtyards. The south courtyard, being treated as an egress path, hasn't been a lot of discussion about how that would be used educationally. I think it's a little bit more functional than educational. The north courtyard, there's not a large gathering space, although we do show a looped path with a kind of a smaller grass area with a large tree specimen that could be used to gather a small to medium group of students. Another thing that has been discussed by the building staff is the opportunity to use that as a kind of contemplation or a zen garden specifically for students with behavior disabilities that may need or benefit, may benefit from some time in the outdoors and in a quiet location, that that is someplace that they could find that environment.
Speaking of future projects, I thought it was interesting with the high school, you labeled on the plans, future access, future addition, going east. There's nothing on this plan that suggests anything, has any thought been given to that? Has it been ruled out?
Yeah, I think, I think this building's probably gonna be about as big as it's gonna get. Grade configuration may change, but I think the thinking is that the common spaces that we have in the building are gonna be pretty well sized for capacity of the building, so I don't think we'll be looking to add. There was some thinking that if we did add, I think we'd go to the north of the, north of the building, but like I said, this, this should appropriately give us a middle school that we could probably hit 800 students or so, so I think at that point in time, we'd be looking for a different school.
Anybody else?
This drawing set is labeled 90% progress, the remaining 10% as interior, mechanical, that sort of stuff, is there any exterior stuff?
Correct, there would not be any suggested landscape utility or exterior elevation changes. The last 10% here would be, as you mentioned, internal coordination between different MEP functions. So I know we are actually preparing to have complete documents this week on Friday, and then provide those to the district and to the general contractor for bidding purposes after that.
Are you satisfied with what they presented at this point?
I am not.
Okay.
But you could call the question, I've got my questions answered, I don't agree with the design. I don't appreciate that the first time we saw it was last month, so we didn't have a lot of time for input. So, I just don't think it's the right approach for this particular building.
Okay, all right, thank you for that comment. At this point, are we ready to make a motion? The motion would be again, recommendation to the village board approval of the condition use permit for the Oregon Middle School with the stipulation of incorporation of the memorandum by Mr. Slavney dated December 10, 2015. Do we have a motion to that effect? Do we have a second?
A second, then.
Thank you. Further discussion? Is there need for a roll call? Vote? Let's try, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks.
Certainly, can we please leave the plans on their table suite?
Certainly, certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move right straight on to the discussion of the draft sign ordinance, Mr. Slavney.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The staff started working on the sign ordinance with the plan commission almost a year ago, and we got about halfway through the project and hit a big bump in the road, and we had to go back to square one, as will every other municipality in the country because of a Supreme Court decision. And what I want to do tonight is give you a, an overview of the sign code, summarize some of the input that we've received. Judy at the chamber has been very helpful to this process, working with us. And then talk about the specific legal issue that was raised by the US Supreme Court decision in midsummer, and then how we've responded to it, working with the plan commission. And in a nutshell, I think we have something that's very close to being ready to present to the public as a draft of the final form, and wanted to make sure the village board was aware of where we're at on this. And I'll be working through the agenda as we go. So the current code is an older code, and it contains a few unusual provisions, but by and large, it's just kind of clunky to work with. And when we first started the project, we thought it was mainly going to be kind of a reorganize the current code, clean it up, get rid of some of these unusual provisions, but a pretty straightforward process. The code still allows billboards. It allows billboards in such a combination of locations and zoning districts that there are no locations for the billboards that it allows, but it allows billboards, and I think one thing that we heard clearly is we, we don't want to allow billboards in the new code. A second, very tall pole signs are allowed, up to 50 feet tall, and that's getting at the Janesville level of pole signs. There are no pole signs of that height in Madison, in all of Madison. And so that was the second directive that we had, we wanted to move towards monument signs, and boy, for the past 10 years, we've been asking new development to use monument signs, and we've gotten voluntary compliance with that, so we felt that we could go ahead and get rid of the tall pole signs. And then the current code talks about electronic signs, but it, I don't think it really anticipated video boards, and we wanted to address that more clearly. On the top of page two, we, in midstream, about a month before we were gonna come in front of the village board with our draft, we got the US Supreme Court decision Reed versus Gilbert that indicated that sign regulations based on content, in other words, if you need to read the sign to figure out what kind of sign it is, like a garage sale sign, for example, or an open house sign, you couldn't do that anymore. And that's how all sign codes are designed, particularly for non-business signs, and so that really interrupted our schedule. In August, we presented our business sign proposals to the chamber and got good In August, we presented our business sign proposals to the chamber and got good feedback. There were a lot of questions about how we would regulate signs on trailers, which isn't really so much a sign code issue as a zoning code issue. But also good comments on regulation of window signs and concerns about how freestanding temporary signs would be regulated. In August, we, we came back to the Plan Commission and continued to work on responses to the chamber meeting and the Supreme Court decision in October and November. And here we are at the joint meeting. From this point on, we'll hope to modify the ordinance in response to suggestions we get here this evening and have, I hope, our final Plan Commission work session at the January meeting. We have a second chamber presentation scheduled for January 21st at the chamber lunch meeting for that month, and then come back for a discussion of chamber member responses to the Plan Commission at the February meeting, and then move on towards adoption, which we project will happen sometime in summer. And staff has talked about, oh, perhaps a six-month period of publicizing the presence of the new ordinance before it actually goes into effect in order to try and minimize the number of property owners that are surprised by the existence of the, the new code. And then with an effective date, in, in here it says July 1, but I think after our discussion this morning, we might be looking later than, than July 1 for that effective date. Are there any questions about the overall timetable? All righty. At the, the August 27th presentation of the sign code at the chamber, I, I think between two-thirds and three-quarters of the questions I got had to do with, with using trailers as, as signs, and particularly the gun shop trailer on Park Street. And because that is a licensed trailer parked in a village street, it's not really subject to the sign code, but I was asked to take a look at how that kind of trailer parking situation could be addressed. And of course, it would have to be addressed similarly throughout the rest of the, the village. And so on the very bottom of page two of the agenda is the beginning of a, of a draft. I've currently drafted this as part of the zoning ordinance related to parking, but again, that's kind of a interim solution because our, our parking requirements primarily relate to parking on, on property outside of the right-of-way, on, on lots, not on parking in the right-of-way. And it may be that we would need to relocate these proposed provisions in the part of the village municipal code that dealt with street rights-of-way, and, and they are. But I think the provisions of the code would apply anyway. So let me walk you through that, beginning at the top of page three. And this would apply to the parking of, of all vehicles, trailers and equipment. In all zoning districts except the central business zoning district are downtown, all vehicles, trailers and equipment used for business purposes shall be parked on the property on which the business is located, when they are not in active use making deliveries or bringing equipment to the work site. For the purpose of this regulation, this location shall be called the originating business property. Now that requirement is, is implied in the zoning code, where you have to park your business vehicles on your business site unless people are taking them home or at the work site. But it, it doesn't say that in the zoning code, so this is another chance to, to say that. When performing a business activity at a location other than the originating business property, the parking of trailers and equipment used for business purposes shall not occur beyond 300 feet of the boundary of the property where they are actively being used for onsite delivery or for contracting work. Such parking may also be onsite within the driveway, parking lot or marked loading zone or loading dock of the delivery or contracting work destination. So in other words, we don't require these business vehicles to be parked in the street. They can be parked in the driveway or the parking lot of the property that they're serving. In all residential districts, vehicles used for business purposes may be parked overnight in a driveway or in a parking lot. However, trailers and equipment used for business purposes may only be parked overnight inside of a garage. And I've gotten several questions about this since I wrote it and, and some concerns that if you allow the tow vehicle to be parked outside, maybe you ought to allow the trailers and, and equipment to be parked outside also. And I think that's an issue that we may want to discuss a little bit tonight. Within the central business district, and again, in the central business district, there's no requirement for onsite parking. All trailers and equipment used for any purpose that are parked on a public parking lot or on a public street shall be attached to the tow vehicles at all time. And that is so in case they do need to be moved, for whatever reason, we have cramped quarters in our, in our downtown area, like all downtowns, we'll be able to get them relocated quickly. No trailers or equipment used for any purposes may be parked in the time period beginning one hour after sunset and ending one hour before dawn on any public street throughout the village except as authorized in writing by the Director of Public Works. I think we all have noticed that when particular street or utility work is being done, sometimes those large pieces of equipment remain on the street, but otherwise, trailers tend to disappear at night and go back to their originating, originating business property. But we wanted to make sure that if there's a, an important reason for leaving them on the street, like they're already set up, or we need to get an early start and, and go late because we're trying to get the work done as quickly as possible, the Public Works Director can authorize that overnight stay. Unlicensed vehicles and trailers used for any purpose may only park or be stored outdoors in a location explicitly approved through a site plan, conditional use permit or planned development for outdoor storage. That's a regulation we have now, but since we're talking about trailers, I thought it'd be a good idea to, to reiterate it here. We, we have met as a staff with the gun shop owner because the comments that originated this effort were directed about that trailer, and he's with us here tonight. And I'm wondering if you have any comments or questions or concerns about this proposed draft? I know a lot of you use trailers in, in your line of work.
I'm struggling with this one. I think it's a, my opinion, I think it's a well-intended ordinance. I just think it's really difficult to enforce, partly because the hours that you're talking about are typically the hours that people are not here to sort of check it. And also because I, I work in construction, so we've got a Bobcat trailer. In my neighborhood, I've got a guy who has a small little lawn mowing company, parks the, he lives in a condo, but he parks his vehicles on the, on the, on the street because he can't pull it into a one-car garage in a condo.
And then the parking lot isn't set up for trailer parking?
Right. Right. The other thing that crosses my mind is, is we went through this, the high school, for instance, is, is communities get more dense and as they tighten up and become more urban, we think about job trailers for construction sites. And again, I, I'm in the business, so that's where my mind goes. I apologize, there's other things that happened. But for instance, if the contractor for the high school, because they're touching almost every square foot on that property, you're not going to put a job trailer in the tennis courts, and you're not going to put it on the football field, the most convenient place to locate it that's close to the entry and close to the building could potentially be the public parking on, on the street, on North Perry Parkway. And that would be in violation of this. It would not. Would not. Why not? It's got a, it's got a name, it's mobile, and it's...
Because the way this is drafted, you could park it within 300, on a public street as long as you're within 300 feet of the job site.
Okay. All right. So point taken on that one. Okay. So, but those are just some of the things that cross my mind.
When I was putting this together, provisions one and two seem to be a little bit different than three, four, five and six. And, and I think that in, in other communities where we've had this concern, I, I added provisions, for example, five and six, because I found in my experience, if you don't like something, it's easier for you to look at it and tell me and me scratch it out than it is not to include it and then try to describe it to me. So I gave you the, the full approach that I've seen used in a variety of different communities, but I don't think they're all necessarily keepers here.
Mike, I was looking at this, the only, and then again, I'm a little confused by some of the comments here, or the, your points, but when it talks about all trailers, I'm just looking at number four, for instance, it says, "Within the central business district or zoning district, all trailers." Were we referring to trailers, were we talking to trailers that have names on them or just trailers?
Trailers. We, we don't think that we can distinguish between trailers that have names on them and, and trailers that don't.
So, "Within the central business district, zoning district, all trailers and equipment should use for any purpose that are marked, are parked on a public parking lot or in a public street shall be attached to a tow vehicle." So if I have a lowboy come in with a bulldozer on it, and he drops a lowboy and takes the dozer off, but he takes his tractor home at night and leaves the, the lowboy trailer sitting on the street, he's in violation. Because he's not attached to the tow vehicle.
Correct. If, if that's really imperative, you could, you could seek the permission of the Public Works Director.
We've got complaints about that very thing you're talking about.
Well, again, I'm in construction, so I see this all. You know, it's, it's...
Dump truck.
Dump trucks.
His trailer, they unload their equipment, they use the dump truck to transport materials while the trailer sits there. According to this, they can't do that anymore.
Not in the downtown.
Nor can you do it in residential area, can you?
So would this, again, in the downtown, would that job trailer be the same issue?
If the, in the downtown area, we would, the rules currently say you have to keep the tow vehicle attached to it, unless you're on private property, then you don't.
Like, going back to my original question, I, I threw out the high school, but what, what if? And it's the what-if game, I get it. Downtown or central business district, job trailer, tight site, no place to put it, want to take two parking stalls, can't do it. Incorrect?
In a public parking lot, correct.
I didn't see that, Mike. Man, I didn't see that prohibition.
Well, we, we have to leave the job trailer attached to the tow vehicle in the downtown area.
Oh, so you couldn't take, detach that, put one in one stall and one in another stall? Okay.
And we, and we see, you go down to university, my gosh, we see job trailers all over the place. And I know they're adjacent to the job site, but they're on, they are actually on, on, right-of-way.
What about if you allow the Public Works Director to authorize that? Because we, that's kind of what we're doing now.
Yeah, I, you know, and, and I think, we gotta be, and I know what John's saying about the what-ifs, but I, you know, I, we can what-up for ourselves at death.
Yeah.
So let's, sometimes just play and be reasonable and common sense.
Also make a lot of rules to try to rectify one certain situation that irks some people and we're now affecting hundreds or thousands of people with, with other regulations and people that have to try to sort these regulations out and administer them and police them, all in effect to maybe try to solve one existing problem.
Yeah.
And we're creating a lot more problems.
Not a problem, concern.
Yeah, that's a question I have. How many complaints do we get about other types of work trailers around town? Not just McSqueak Outdoors, but other places?
So we've, we've gotten a few complaints of, of trailers being in the, in the downtown, not being attached. So it's not as much as the other trailer.
But like in residential sections where a person does windows and siding and they've got a trailer, and we don't hear about that, right? Yeah.
That's true. That's, that's very common. During the summer, you got siding and windows and remodeling going on.
Because those complaints would probably go more to the PD than us anyways.
Yeah. Okay.
My question, number three there, just along with what's being said as far as needing to put all trailers and equipment inside a garage for parking overnight, is that seems like fairly restrictive depending on the size of the equipment. It, it may be the only choice people have, and, and then how do you start discerning the difference between the equipment and a vehicle if you have an open, an open flatbed truck that you've got equipment on it to get it inside a garage when it otherwise wouldn't be separated?
Well, that was one of the points that I'd heard about number three, and I think three is the, the one here that affects the most people. And in thinking about number three, if we allow the business vehicle to be parked onsite, I'm wondering what's the problem with having the business trailer parked onsite with the, the equipment?
I don't have a problem myself with both the trailer and the tow vehicle being outside, not in a garage.
Well, but like Mike said, you, you've thrown a lot of things here.
Oh, yeah.
It's easier to take it away than it is to try to figure out how to put something back into it.
And I think the intent here tonight was not to try and resolve this and, and hammer it into final form, but to introduce it to both groups simultaneously, so particularly people on the village board aren't cornered on the street and, and asked about what's going on. This is typically something that we would try to refine at the Plan Commission, working with staff before bringing it back to you. But I think it would be helpful to, to get your feedback as to, you know, generally, do you want to see us refine this and, and bring something forward here, or is this something we should, we should drop?
I'll make a comment. All right. Are we doing... You seem to question what I'm doing. Are we responding to one circumstance in the village? Are we responding to many other issues that came up with the village and we're trying to, you know, approach the whole thing? Are we just, are we zeroing in on one situation at this time that, that resulted this?
It's an interesting question. The proposed language here does not zero in on one situation.
I understand that.
But if the question is, are the complaints that, you know, we're hearing driven mainly by one situation, I think that was your experience at the chamber meeting.
That was my experience at the chamber meeting, but, you know, I'm here one day a month and, and I, I can't speak for what happens, you know, from the public to the police department or to Public Works or Village Hall as a whole.
But the other thing I'll say is that there does seem to be a relationship between this issue and the sign ordinance work that's been going on, because if somebody is using a trailer functionally as an advertising sign, you know, now is a logical time to a trailer functionally as an advertising sign, you know, now is a logical time to figure out, how do you deal with it? Do you say, "That's fine, we're gonna, we're okay with that," or do you say, "Well, we have some concerns about that, we need to figure out how to deal with them?" So, it does seem to logically fit in with the broader question of sign regulation, because the trailer that prompted a fair amount of the discussion seems to be, it's being used as an advertising sign, but it's a trailer parked currently legally on a public street. So, I'll just add two other things. One, I think if there is a desire to continue to address this issue, I've been working on trying to figure out how to incorporate it in the parking regulations, so it's not strictly a zoning code issue. I think there's some elements of this, Mike, that probably stay in the zoning code, but then there are some things that I think are parking regulations, and I've been working on it as I've been listening to the discussion. The other thing that strikes me as challenging here is, I think I would limit this to trailers and equipment, because I think if we try to address vehicles used for business purposes, I have no idea where that begins and ends. I mean, my car is a vehicle that I use for business purposes, it's parked out front right now. So, to me, the focus seems to be on trailers and equipment mainly.
Yes, I would agree.
Yeah. Not everybody agrees with me, but that strikes me as what the issue is, because, again, vehicles used for business purposes, to me, that could include my car, which is just a plain brown car, but, I mean, I drive it to work. Does that mean it's a vehicle used for business purposes?
Well, the purpose for my question was that, you know, we've got a lot of people sitting here, we've got a lot of work being done. If it's just for one instance, then I think we're wasting our time. That's my personal opinion. I'll be with you, sir, as to me. If it's something that we really are concerned about within the village for the future, then yes, we should be addressing it, and yes, now's the time, because we are working on the, on the sign ordinance, and so then obviously this may drift back into the village code itself separately as a parking ordinance. That's my point. I don't know if anybody else has any comments to that, anything you want to disagree with me or agree, whatever.
I agree with that, Greg. I mean, I think this came because of the instance of the trailer at the gun shop, it sounds like the chamber, and that's what I've heard. To add to that a little bit, as far as what Greg said, there's another part of the community that doesn't like that trailer. So, that's the other part we have to look at, I think, and consider as we move forward is as far as what we do with that.
But then going another step further, though, they don't like it because of what's on the trailer, or because of the trailer being parked on the street?
It's been mostly because of what's on the trailer, and most of the comments I hear are after this unfortunate shooting in the US, this publicized nation in the world.
So, that's...
That's when that goes up a bit and then subsides until there's none, and there's way too many of them. That trailer doesn't cause those to happen, however.
We had a resident a number of years ago that didn't like the fact we had a cannon parking, or Amy Dawn Jamesville Street.
Yeah.
Okay. What's, the comment was, she's a friend of mine, but the comment was, what does that tell visitors coming to the village?
Yeah.
I wanted to comment, but I didn't. So...
I think the Supreme Court just said we can't control the content of signs.
That's right. The Supreme Court pretty well told us that we can't look at, and that's where I was going with all this, because it's told us that we can't look at the content.
Right.
Because, you know, take away the fact that we have a trailer of the sign, it's all the signs in the village, we can't dictate the content, so...
I've had some concerns with that trailer, that it blocks the other businesses and makes that corner less safe. I don't know how accurate that actually is, I'm not on that street to speak of, so...
As long as it's outside the division triangle, it shouldn't make a difference. Yes?
If the current trailer is legally parked, would it be necessary to grandfather it in under a new village ordinance? Would that be a requirement or not?
I think it's inherently something that is movable, and it's on village property.
Right, we can change the parking rules without having to allow everyone to continue parking the way they used to park.
Yeah.
We don't have to worry about that.
But the point also that, are we going through an exercise that, are we just, you know, I don't believe in always making more laws or more rules or more regulations just to have them. If you're not going to enforce them in the first place, we got a whole bunch of them we're probably enforcing now. So, Steve, you wanted to make a comment, correct? You wanted to say something to us? But we're gonna have to ask you to come up, see, because it's have to be on, just recording.
Well, my name's Steve Dorazio.
Just come to the microphone here, please, Steve. Thank you.
Seems like my name keeps being brought up, and some of the questions I heard tonight, I guess I'd have to disagree with. Matt, you were asked a question, and you avoided the question on what Greg answered, on the amount of complaints. Not too long ago, we sat here in this room, and I heard Mike saying, "We're having all kinds of complaints." And Mike, I asked you, "How many complaints have you had?" And the answer was ten. Where are they tonight?
I don't think I said that, Steve.
Yes, you did say that.
Well, we're not gonna go to that.
I heard tonight...
I don't want people putting words if I'm...
No, okay, I understand that, and let's...
Did I not ask you how many people have complained in the village?
I said ten, but then I'll be reacting.
Okay.
I think we're getting off the point here.
We're gonna continue, yeah, we're going off the point, Steve.
Well, it isn't off point when it's my name and my company that is brought up on this whole thing. I, yes, I do have a trailer parked out on the road, it is hooked up to a truck, I am legally parked, I move it every night. What have I done wrong? Tonight I'm hearing about trailers and construction trailers, but it all goes back to Max Creek. So, that's, as you, Greg, asked, is it about one person or trailers in general? Question that I have is, what about Wisco Industries? They have trailers in their parking lot, they're left out all night long, you're gonna have them put them under a garage?
Are they on private property?
Sure, but what about the contractors that pull into their garage or into their own driveway? You're asking them to put them in a garage?
So, that's not in a residential district?
Really?
So, that situation would be pertinent.
Pretty darn close to a residential, though, isn't it?
It is, but it's not.
We could have a contested discussion on it when we get to the point where we're actually entering into some kind of a review of an ordinance. This is just some, some things we're throwing out for possible discussion, and we are having the discussion.
I just think it's interesting how my name comes up at chamber meetings, two-thirds of the people are complaining, "Pretty empty room tonight." Picture of my trailer in the Oregon Observer, nobody's come and talked to me about it.
That's free advertising.
Sure, absolutely. Just here to listen, Greg, that's all.
I understand. It's, I think the reason your name comes up, Steve, is obviously because, because you got your trailer in the Oregon Observer, and because there's been some, I guess, complaints to the village, or, and I don't know how many comments were made by the chamber, it doesn't matter whether it's one or 20. So, that's why it's being discussed tonight, and that's why I'm asking you. If we've got one situation, the village of Oregon, that's prompting this entire discussion and taking the times of all the individuals here, and that's the only thing that we're going to address, then why are we addressing it?
So, I have a question.
Certainly.
How else would you recommend addressing it? It's a concern of the Oregon residents, what would be a different...
What is the concern?
What's that?
If you want to, then you get, we're opening this up, Matt says this, we're opening this up to a huge, to a discussion of trailers on the street. Again, take his trailer, take the name off of it. Now, let's talk about it. And how many other trailers like that, with the name off of it, are sitting on the streets of the village of Oregon at any given time, especially during the summer?
Well, you've changed the question.
No, I haven't.
The original question I heard you ask was, if we're all here to discuss this one issue, and if we're bringing all of these minds around this one issue, is it a waste of our time? And my question back to you was, what would be the right way or a different way to deal with the one issue then? I'm simply asking to understand.
Okay. And where I'm driving with this is, I believe this discussion's being driven by the content on the side of that trailer, not by the fact the trailer's there.
Well, to your point, though, if you want to disregard that, that's okay.
Okay, then it's fine, then we'll have the discussion.
I don't know that, I don't know that I have been approached because of the content, actually, tonight's the first time I've heard that people have had a concern about the content. I've been approached, though, from the perspective of advertising on that corner on a main street into town, and the way that that looks. And there's been other things that people have brought up, people have brought up to me the old motel, and how the old motel looks. People have brought up to me the storage facilities, and how it looks to have the orange storage sheds on the main entrance into town, or one of them. So, it isn't, Steve, it's not you, and it's not your business. I don't, from my perspective, it's just the general issue of, what do we want the main entrance into town to look like, and what do we want to have there? And that trailer has come up in the two years that I've been on the board, and actually, it's probably come up since Max Creek was open, since that trailer was first parked there, as a concern from some residents.
So, may I?
Certainly.
That was brought up at our little powwow we had here, and I said, "Not a problem, I'll rewrap my trailer." I can put anything on it, I can put pictures on it, the picture, you know, I can have a guy hanging onto a gun, I don't want to go that route. Everything is in block letters. Max Creek Outdoors Gun Store, that's all it says with an arrow. It's the word gun. That's what it is.
Correct?
That's what I'm hearing.
Well, it's not what I've heard, but I don't doubt that some people have taken issue with that, because it's a volatile issue, people send, tend to be on, they tend to have an opinion about that, one way or the other.
Oh, yeah. And this lady back here wants to have a comment, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're gonna need you, can we give her a remote or the cordless?
Or mic.
The cordless?
Or whatever.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Thielen. I didn't really plan on, you know, saying anything tonight, but, you know, I've listened to this whole issue, and being at the end of the court of public opinion recently, I guess I'd have to say that I would very much think it's the word gun that's on the trailer. You know, it may be they're saying something else, but I would venture to guess that if that trailer said, "Turn here for Oregon Veterinary Clinic and Hound Huddle Daycare," nobody would be saying anything. You know, so you may be hearing something, they may be saying, "Oh, you have to do something about it," but just my opinion that I think it is a volatile issue, yes. And I would think that these complaints, which, you know, I guess I don't know the origin of them or the history of them, but I guess I'd have to agree with Steve that, you know, it's probably the gun issue, and that you are just dealing with one issue. It's gonna be very difficult if you start regulating trailers and construction trailers and siding trailers, and, you know, for what purpose?
You have professional fishermen that have their boats.
Right.
And they're gonna be advertising fishing goods and the manufacturers and...
Right, but to what end? You know, then it's just gonna be a matter of regulation, it's gonna be a nightmare, so...
Thanks, Bonnie. Judy.
Some of the comments were made at the chamber, some of them were also, because we do have two churches who cannot put up signs either. So, you know, can they put up a truck so that on Sunday morning, where the church is? And that's what they're asking, too. So, I mean, there's two churches that are not, you know, they can't use signage, and they were asking the same question, and that's when we were going through the sign ordinance, we had brought that up, too. So, I'm not sure if that's, you know, if that's a concern. Some people were upset, because should they, can they put a truck, you know, with a sign there?
Or a craft fair sign?
Yes, like they do.
On the right-of-way?
Yes.
On the berm?
Yep.
On every corner on the way to the...
So, I mean, that's another question. So, it's not just, you know, I'm just saying that this is another comment that I got over, it's not just the truck, so...
No, I understand, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
I think when we did the sign code, we were very cognizant and careful not to place undue burden on business owners, you know, in looking at what type of signs we would allow and things like that. If we get into this, I mean, we are affecting a lot of business owners that use trailers and vehicles in their business, and I think we're putting a lot of regulations on them and a lot of things that it would be a cost burden, not only to those business owners, but to the village staff and police department to try to even, you know, begin to get their arms around this and police it.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think how to, how to address this, because it really opens up, and Mike, it opens up a can of worms to try, and Matt, obviously, I think you...
Well, it's a very tough issue.
It's a tough issue.
Because we have to be totally content neutral, so we can't be approaching this from the standpoint of attempting to regulate what messages are okay and what messages are not okay. That's not what this is about, it can't be about that. So, then the question is, how do you deal with it? This is one approach. Mike, let me ask you this question, did you consider, I'm not saying this would work or not, I don't know, but did you consider, for example, drafting this so that it only applied to vehicle, or excuse me, to trailers and equipment that contained some kind of message? Not saying what message, but any message. So, in other words, if you've got a trailer that doesn't say anything on it, it's just painted white, solid black, whatever, it doesn't have a name on it, a message, whatever, did you think about that at all? And I don't know if that would make people more or less comfortable with this, but then if, I guess if you, what I'm thinking is, if you've got a trailer that has no message on it, you wouldn't be subject to this. But is that content neutral? No message versus a message? I don't know.
No, I didn't, I didn't really think about that. What I thought about was that you can get a pretty good-sized trailer for, you know, 10, 15 grand, compared to the cost of certain signs, you know, it's a comparable cost, and we wouldn't want trailers that were really signs parked all over the village in the right-of-way. You know, it's hard to see around some of them, and it's clutter, and so that's where I was thinking that what seems to be focused on primarily one situation could really get out of, out of hand, and, you know, the fact that there's a license plate on that sign with wheels, you know, currently makes it legal.
That would be my only reason for wanting to address this right now, is to not have 13 trailers parked on Park Street as you come into town, business trailers that are, you know, perfectly legal, but they are used for advertising purposes. We can't regulate the content of that, because they're not signs, and they're not, they're well within their rights to be there.
So, when I was writing one and two here, that's what I was primarily thinking about. Then I looked at other codes around the country, several that I'd worked on, and threw in the other provisions here, and that's what I meant by saying, you know, maybe, maybe the latter issues here are, have gone farther than you would want it to.
I have concern about the, in particular, the churches that are having an issue of signage and location that are not in a position to be able to identify themselves, and I just wonder how many situations where we, or how many vehicles we might have out on the street at any one time, advertising their business beyond that of the churches, but commercial businesses doing that, I kind of doubt the numbers that we might have out there doing that. I know what you're saying, that we might have that possibility.
It's not realistic for, to have 15 vehicles, but it's...
I can't, I can't see that probably happening, there may be some individual cases where that works for them, but I think they're gonna be pretty small, and I'd like to leave it open to... And I'd like to leave it open to being able to have some of the civic organizations or churches in specific that we have issues with right now, that they have some flexibility on being able to get themselves identified.
I appreciate your comments, Eric, on this, but like Larry, I'm trying to envision when I've seen this. And I don't think I've seen that situation you're talking about.
No, I haven't either.
And you and I both travel a lot of areas. We go to, both being in construction, we go to a lot of municipalities and a lot of places. And I just don't see it from that standpoint. The only thing I see is, like we've talked about, is again, the commercial side in residential areas. When you're doing siding, when you're doing roofing, you're doing remodeling, you're doing HVAC modifications or plumbing modifications, whatever, that's, you know, they're in, they're gone.
Do you see it more on, or Ferris Rives needed more?
Could be, I just...
Right, not probably in suburban, but more on...
That's a possibility. Mike, item number two. If I read that correctly, is that, with what the situation that's occurring right now, would that be fit into that category or not?
I think that the current trailer is normally parked more than 300 feet.
I mean, 258 feet according to the...
Apparently, it's been checked. Okay?
Did you use a wheel or a...
Well, somebody did.
Well, I think the issue there, though, is, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but it needs to be actively being used for off-site delivery or for contracting work.
I see that.
And so if it's not being, if it's not in active use for that, then that doesn't give you the opportunity to park it there.
What about the trailers that park on Park Street and use the restaurants? Delivery vehicles? Does a semi out there every day? FedEx parks out there and goes in and does and leaves large.
That's a point.
Gets complicated.
Yes, it does. That's what I'm saying, it gets very complicated. I'm wondering if, I don't know how to solve it. And I guess I just, I don't want to throw my hands up, and I don't like saying I can't figure it out, but again, are we gonna spend a lot of time here trying to solve an issue that is complicated, difficult, because it's being prompted by one instance or one situation within the village? And can we ask the individual to maybe relocate us a little bit or do something a little different to make it more palatable to those who don't like the trailer?
Would you be open to that, Steve?
What about a vehicle that is wrapped in certain trailers, so it's a vehicle itself?
I just asked if you'd be open to that. That's, that's, you know, if at the end of the day, if your goal is to advertise on that corner and to find a way to do it regardless of the ordinances in the village and how some people feel about it, I think you're gonna find a way. And you make good points all the way around.
I'm not here to fight with the village. I'm a good business community member. I support our village financially.
Yep.
I have a business that relies on retail walk-in. Yeah, the word is guns, absolutely. There's been no incidents whatsoever in our shop. It's interesting, a year ago, I came to the village board to ask for permission to open up a shooting range.
Steve, I'm sorry, break, come on up. We're gonna need you up there. Thank you.
So, a year ago, I come to the village board and asked for permission to open up a shooting range. And the village gave me permission. So, in our warehouse, we have six lanes where you shoot guns. It was an open floor, just like tonight, and two people showed up. Where were the other 9,000-plus people of the Village of Oregon? If they were that distraught about guns, they had an opportunity to fight at that point. So, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not doing anything wrong.
Right.
My trailer is legally parked.
Correct.
I'm willing to change it if it makes everybody happy.
That was my question.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was your question.
I brought it up at the meeting here that day.
That was my only question.
Okay, Stephen.
Yes, absolutely.
I would just say, so Steve, I was at, I happened to be at the Chamber of Commerce meeting that we're all talking about. And I would say there was probably 10 businesses, 10 folks representing businesses that express concern about the trailer. So, if you wanna, if you want to get a, you know, the viewpoint from the business community, you might want to attend a chamber meeting. But I, I mean, I was there and I listened, so these folks aren't making that up that...
No, and I don't, I'm not saying they're not, but why didn't the 10 come knocking on my door? Okay? I have talked to my neighbors on Park Street, the other businesses, and they have no problem with it.
Yeah, I'm just telling you what I...
And there's only three other businesses down there.
Yeah, I get it.
So, and as far as residents that, you know, drive by my shop to get back into the condo area, no problems there either. So...
Yeah, I don't, this whole thing's prompted by the village getting some, and people are, they're getting telephone calls, and so they have to respond to it. And that's what prompted this thing getting on the agenda and a discussion and all that kind of stuff. So, again, maybe, maybe discussion. Jeff, the idea of changing maybe how it looks. Does that make a difference? I don't know.
I don't know. Just ask, talk to me. That's all I ask.
Well, we'd love to, but we don't, we don't know how to help you on this thing. And it's not a question of trying to help you, it's just a question of, it's not the village against Max Creek. It's a village responding to residents that have called and simply trying to discuss it and have a, either a solution or a fact that we can't have a solution and we just move on. There's a couple of ways to look at it, you know? And at this point in time, I see just hours and hours and hours of trying to come to an agreement on some kind of ordinance, whether it be parking or some kind of sign, which I don't think it'd be sign ordinance. And at the end of the day, we're gonna create more of a problem in this village than what we are solving. Because somewhere, we're gonna, it's the old what-ifs. I don't like going down the road of what-ifs all the time, because you can what-if yourself to death again and never make a solution. Common sense, that's all we have to do. And maybe if we, you know, we back off and you make an effort, maybe that's a solution. I don't know.
Do you have an idea, Steve, what you're willing to do? Could you say, "Max Creek Outdoors Hunting Supplies"?
Good idea.
And take the gun store off of there?
The word gun is the issue, correct?
Yeah, that's what I've heard.
Firearms?
People talk to me.
Firearms? Well, the name of it is Max Creek Firearms, is the gun shop.
Yeah.
Are you about a problem?
I think that modifies a bit. I don't think as much as some people would like that. How many? I have no idea. But again, would Max Creek Outdoors Hunting Supplies, would that...
Versus gun?
Somebody's gonna...
Possibly. Steve, my question, or when you come around the corner and look at my sign that's on my property, what does it say?
I'm hardly ever on that corner, so I don't know.
Max Creek Firearms with a picture of a gun.
Yeah.
That's on the front of your building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that's 250...
Eight feet away.
Yeah, and if that trailer was in that parking lot, it wouldn't be an issue either. It's the location, there's no doubt, it's the location. It's a main entrance to the community.
So, what if I take a cube-type van instead of a trailer and put a wrap around it and work with whoever on the board?
As far as what goes on?
I don't want to meaningfully negotiate a binding resolution to this, that, I wouldn't want to create the impression in your mind that if you did something and people...
I don't want to be in a position of making, saying yes and no.
And the concern that I have is that I don't think we can really agree that that would be the end of this, because it might not be. I mean, we might be here a couple of years from now and there's three more trailers with different signs and the village is back talking about it again. And so, I mean, I think you have the right to do what you want to do within existing law. And you're right, you're not breaking any laws. Nobody said you were. You're not doing anything wrong. I don't think anybody here has said you are. The question is, should the village modify the rules in some way? And so that, if you want to try and do something different and maybe that affects the rulemaking process, you know, you're welcome to do that. But I'd caution the board against trying to negotiate a...
No, and I was going with that. I was getting, but you're, in the true attorney, you're gonna jump in right away.
I'm sorry. Can't help myself.
I'm sorry, man, I just got...
It's all right.
No, but I agree with you, that's, we have to be careful. We're not, and that's where Steve was going, trying to get us to approve or agree, and we're not gonna do that. So, but we're just, there's some suggestions thrown out, and I see a lot of people nodding heads up and down. And it sounds like, gee, well, that wouldn't be a bad idea to maybe at least try it, look at it. We're all trying to just make everybody happy. You know, I'm not, I'm absolutely opposed to changing ordinance because we got five or 10 residents in the Village of Oregon and 9,000 residents that decide they don't like something.
I think it also, it goes a long way that you're here tonight talking about it, that you're concerned, Steve, so I think that, we appreciate that.
Thank you. So, we still haven't gone anywhere with this, so I'm, we're gonna come to a resolution.
Well, it sounds like, Steve, it might be interested in changing the wording a little bit, so...
Let's, I would suggest, since we have, again, you look at our agenda and you look at our timetable, we're a long ways from where we are going to have a final draft and we're gonna have a public hearing. So, I would suggest we all just cool off and table this part of it. Let's see where it goes. And if we need to readdress this thing again sometime in the early spring, we can. Does that work for people? I see some heads nodding. And of course, you guys do what you want, because you're elected officials. We are, yeah, okay. All right, so, let's get back on the road to the rest of this thing then.
Well, we want to, we're down at the bottom of page three now, and this Supreme Court decision, initially, it sounded pretty easy for me to understand. And as Jackie and I tried to react to it, it seemed to cause real worry, because it's a fundamental change. So, we have a very short PowerPoint presentation to explain maybe more completely the implications of this decision and why we're ending up with the approach we are.
Well, real quick, Mike, when you refer to pages two and three, which document are you...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at...
I'm not so sure they have it. They don't have it.
I'm on the agenda.
He's using the original agenda that he died.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, the handout. Maybe you want to switch to the handout?
Thank you.
That might be...
Very good.
So, now we're actually looking at the other handout with the PowerPoint presentation. Okay. But for this one, it's on the top of page three.
Top of page three. Oh.
Thank you.
We actually cut our pace and just...
All right. So, this is an abbreviated version of a presentation that Mike and Matt Dragney and I did at the Upper Midwest American Planning Association Conference. And so, we're gonna give you the short and sweet version, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. I know the planning commission is very well versed in this, but for some of the village board members, this might be new. So, this is just introductions. I'm Jackie Mish, Mike Slavny, and Matt Dragney. I'm sure you know a little bit better. So, as you know, the sign code covers a lot of business signs, but we just kind of wanted to remind you all that the sign code covers a lot of other types of signs that you might not immediately think of when you think about signage. So, political signs, for example, garage sale signs, I think were mentioned earlier. I call these ideological signs or free speech signs. I think I've seen a lot of these "Slow Down for Kids" signs coming into town in Oregon. These kind of fun congratulatory signs or school spirit signs. Tons of real estate signs and open house signs you'll see in most communities. This is like a subdivision sign showing what kind of lots are still available. Construction project signs, so this will usually have the names of the architect, developer, engineers, other contractors.
Lenders.
Lender, yeah. Thank you. And so, this is, these are the kind of signs we were regulating when we embarked on this sign code rewrite earlier this year. And so, when we started back, you know, earlier in the spring, when we started rewriting the Oregon Sign Code, we had certain objectives in mind. And so, Mike kind of talked about these, but we didn't want to allow for billboards, we didn't want to allow for tall pylon signs. We were pretty happy with the sign number and formulas that were in the existing sign codes, so we wanted to carry those forward. But we did think our new sign code could offer business owners more options for their signs. And we thought it would be really great to be able to include all the rules for the signs in this kind of easy-to-reference table, instead of forcing a business owner to read the whole sign code. So, that was kind of where we were coming from when we did the first draft of the sign code. So, we were able to condense most of the rules for the most commonly used signs into three tables. So, again, this is the first draft. So, a lot of these signs on the first table are based on the configuration of the signs. So, we've got unbuilding signs and freestanding signs. On the second table, we had kind of miscellaneous business signs, and some of these signs, as we'll talk about more, had a little bit of content-based regulation in them. And our third table was all of these non-business signs, a lot like those examples I just showed you. These are yard signs, political signs, public event signs, things like that. So, a lot of these are content-based.
And these tables were perfect. We were so ready to go.
Mike is still next line.
I'm still mad about this.
Yes, Mike is still mad about this. I'm still mad about this. We were really in good shape. Rules weren't too different. You know, everything we set out to do, we pretty much achieved with these tables. And then, dun, dun, dun. This case drops and it completely, not only did it completely change our approach, but it completely changed the way all cities and communities can regulate signs. And so, you may have heard Mike kind of describe this. The short version of the case is that a church brought the town of Gilbert in Arizona to court because they thought their sign code was unfair. Basically, the issue became, the issue was that the town of Gilbert treated different signs differently based on the content of the sign. So, a political sign could be a certain size, and an event sign, we had different size. And so, so that became kind of an issue, a legal issue. And so, so why is that a legal issue? It's a legal issue because of the First Amendment. When you regulate content, you're regulating someone's First Amendment rights. And so, just as a reminder, First Amendment, Congress shall make no law overriding the freedom of speech as well as many other things. So, when we regulate content, we have to be careful because we are affecting people's First Amendment rights. So, so this is, this gets a little fun. When we are, when we do have content-based regulation, we have to apply strict scrutiny to laws, which means that you have to really justify when you're regulating based on content. So, a municipality has to really demonstrate that that law, if it regulates content, is necessary to further compelling government interest. And that law has to be very narrowly tailored to achieve that compelling government interest. And a big point here is that laws that regulate content rarely survive this level of analysis. And so, it's generally in a community's interest to avoid content-based regulation because it's hard to justify. And so, throughout the United States, different federal circuits kind of determined what was content neutral and what wasn't in different ways. And so, there were kind of two different approaches that were taken. One was the rigid or purist test, which is, the court would say, okay, look, if the law has any content-based regulation at all in it, it is content-based regulation and we're gonna apply that strict scrutiny that I just talked about. So, in other words, if the law requires you to read the sign in order to know how to apply the law, then that law is content-based. So, very black and white. On the other hand, other, or excuse me, other circuits kind of used a more pragmatic test. So, they were saying, all right, yeah, it's a content-based law, but your intention is not to censor speech. Your intention is to get at something else. So, for example, a garage sale sign, you know, if you have special rules for a garage sale sign, you're not trying to censor anyone's speech, you're just trying to get at a specific regulation. And so, these courts would say, you know, that kind of law is okay. And so, lots of times, when different circuits disagree on an issue, the Supreme Court will step in to resolve this kind of discrepancy. And so, that's what the Supreme Court did in this case, and they came down on the rigid or purist side. So, that means if you have to read the sign in order to know how to interpret the law, then it's content-based regulation and we can't do it. So, that's really important and is kind of a game changer for how we regulate signs, even if we're not trying to control or censor speech. So, the big takeaway for this, and Mike has mentioned this, is that it kind of makes, it makes... So, the big takeaway for this, and Mike has mentioned this, is that it kind of makes, it makes many, if not all, sign codes in the United States more or less obsolete because they'll have this kind of basic content-based regulation. But we did come away with some takeaways after working with Matt and kind of studying what had been written about the case. So, these are the guidelines we put together, and we shared them at the APA conference. You can still continue to regulate physical configuration of signs, so size, quantity. You can still continue to have different sign rules for different zoning districts. You can regulate electronic message boards differently. You can have different rules for commercial and residential property. And we think you can regulate off versus on-premise signs. And so, these are some drafting guidelines that we put together that we carried forward into the next draft. Basically, in a nutshell, be really careful with content-based rules and have a strong purpose statement. So with that in mind, we put together some new tables, or we took a look at our existing tables to see what we needed to change. So our first table actually looked pretty good. Most of these signs in the first table are based on the configuration of the sign and how big it was, and what kind of shape it was. So we were, we didn't actually have to make many changes at all to this table. The second table had a number of content-based signs that we had to address. And this third table needed a totally new approach for those. All of those kind of yard signs, garage sale signs, congratulatory signs, almost all of those needed to be looked at again. So, we revised our objectives when we came into draft two. And by this point, it's December. And so we made sure that we were following Reed v. Gilbert. We still wanted to eliminate billboards and those very tall pylon signs. And we had to come up with a strategy for making sure that people in the village could still have those new building, new construction signs, those signs advertising available plaques, and those neighborhood signs that designate where a neighborhood is, or other community identity signs. And we still wanted to stick with the sign area formula, still wanted to allow for more, more choices for business signs, and we still like the table concept. So, here's a revision. Here's a draft two of our tables here. So, table one, again, very few changes. Table two. Now, do we wanna get the details of this?
Yeah, well, no, we'll, we'll talk about the tables.
Okay. So, table two, what we've done is we've, we've got a new approach for those construction signs I just spoke about, and active plaques. So we'll get into that more in detail. And then table three, we made a lot more changes to some of these kind of more content-based signs. And then we added a fourth table to allow for yard signs, which we're hoping will accommodate a lot of those special event signs, real, for-sale signs, garage sale signs, things like that.
Political signs?
Political signs, especially political signs. So. So, on some of those ta-- on some of those signs, we kind of had to come up with creative solutions because we wanted to allow certain types of signs because of what says, what, what it says on the sign. And so we came up with different ways to do that. So, for example, and we'll talk about this a little bit more, a little bit more, but with these construction signs, we're gonna allow this as a bonus sign if you have an active building permit. Again, we can't control the content of this, but we're controlling who can get one, so it's based on the permit.
But that sign could say "by guns," you know?
Don't tell anyone, but yes. See, and then for this, this will be triggered by plat face, again, a bonus sign. These types of public information signs are only going to be allowable if you have institutional zoning, and.
If you have institutional zoning?
Yeah, if you have institutional zoning. And this is actually not a great graphic. After I put this together, I realized, because we wanna require this type of sign going forward to be monument signs. These neighborhood identification signs are gonna be bonus signs that are only allowed with a final plat or on a outlot or CSM. And we're still kind of on the fence about these. We know how we're going to allow for them, but we're wondering if this is gonna be the first challenge to the decision of the Supreme Court, because we think people are gonna have, take issue with the fact that they can't have unlimited political signs, and as many as they want.
We'll talk about that issue. That's, this is one of the tough nuts to crack. So we'll go back to the, the outline. And I just wonder if there are any questions now about this content-based regulation. I think the nutshell is, if you have to read the sign to figure out what kind of sign it is, it's probably not something we can regulate by name like that, like garage sale signs or real estate signs. And mostly, it's these kind of temporary-type signs rather than the business signs that were the heart of the problem with the Reed decision.
So I had a question. Could you help me with pole signs and billboards? How do you define those?
Yes. So a billboard is off-site advertising, where you're advertising a, a, a store or a service that's located on another property. So that's off-site. So the pole sign is when the face of the sign is supported higher up in the air and not low to the ground. So we distinguish between pole signs, or sometimes are called pylon signs, and monument signs, which look more like cemetery monuments. They're, they're on a footing on the ground.
So is that why you were saying that those signs were not a great example, because those were technically pole signs? In slide thirty-four?
Yes.
Yeah, though I, I guess some of them might be low enough to be into a post sign, which we would allow.
Yeah, the one on the left there, I think, is.
Yeah, but this one would probably, probably be too tall.
Right. So, any other questions about that? Now.
Why is a trailer not a billboard?
Because it's on the street.
Just wondering.
And it has a license, yeah. That's the, it's, that's the short answer.
I thought other people might have the same question, so I'll throw it out there.
Okay.
Jackie, your use of the term "a bonus sign" means, means what specifically?
Yeah, when we go through the tables, we'll explain how many signs each business gets, and those bonus signs would be above and beyond those.
So, in, in putting this ordinance together, what we found was a lot of the things we were struggling with were these temporary signs, and I'm in five now on our, our outline. And, and the enforcement of temporary sign regulations, and Judy's been really helpful with this, and I think, I think she's getting the word out to her members. A lot of temporary signs end up on the street terrace, between the sidewalk and the street. That's the street. That's not private property, and they shouldn't be there. Of course, that's an issue now, and it'll be an issue in the new code. But I've seen improvement in, in the last six months, and I think a lot of it is Judy working with her members. You know, I, that's a liability you're taking on. You're putting an obstruction on somebody else's property, and, and, yeah, I wouldn't do it. But it's common practice. And, and then we've got laws in the current ordinance that work pretty well, but it's hard to enforce them, and those are the temporary signs, the board signs, and the banner signs. We intend to keep the rules, which are two thirty-day periods during the course of a year. You get an extra bonus forty-foot, forty-square-foot sign. And I think those are generally followed well in the community, but not everywhere and not always. We intend to keep the rules the same. They generally seem to be working. I mentioned the, the signs in the right-of-way, but we are also getting sandwich board signs, and sometimes on the sidewalk. And again, the sidewalk isn't the private property, that's the village right-of-way, and that's an issue now in some locations. And generally, I've seen an improvement. Those are being taken at least off of the street terrace and off of the sidewalk and being moved back. Another issue we get are signs that are off-site and in the right-of-way for garage sales and open houses. Those are enforcement problems everywhere. We don't intend to change the rules for those, but it's, it's more a matter of enforcement, and we struggle with that. We only have so many resources to, to throw at enforcing these rules. So, I think what happens in my experience, when you write a new sign code and you point out that you can't do these things, people get the impression that under the current code you can, but you can't. You can't put signs in the right-of-way, you can't put them on the sidewalk. You can't have temporary signs more than twice a year for more than thirty days at a time. We're keeping all of those rules the same, and it's important, particularly for our elected officials, to understand we aren't changing those rules. We're, we're continuing the rules that we have. On the other hand, the new, the new code gives us, us a chance to publicize that you have to be careful with these temporary signs and where you place them, and so, for how long, and, and we think working with the chamber, we could get the message out to the business community. Of course, a lot of the issues are with the residential properties. So we're gonna continue to struggle with enforcing those, and almost every community does. Alright, so let's go through the, the new code. Yeah, we'll hand that out. And what I'm gonna focus on isn't the text, it's gonna be these tables. We'll go through these pretty quickly. So what we've done with these tables is, we've taken fifty pages worth of text and pared that down to fifteen, plus the tables. And the tables are all that a, a normal property owner or business will need to worry about. So it's the special circumstances, the administration, the interpretation that's covered in the text, and that's mainly for, for village staff to, to be concerned with. So for the Plan Commission, we worked on the text, and the table was kind of freestanding. So what we've done is we've shuffled the rules a little bit in the text, and we've added certain sign types and taken some away, and we've shuffled the rules for that. But the text is gonna look very familiar to you. Alrighty, so we just may need to point to the screen. I'll stand up there. So let me tell you how this is, is organized. So this first page is for permanent business signs. We have a column for what we call sign categories and sign types. What you mean for a signed permit, if you need one or not. How many signs you're allowed, what the formula for determining the area is, location requirements, what kind of lighting is allowed. And then what are the rules for the various groups of zoning districts? So that first zoning district column is our residential zoning districts. The middle column are the low-key business districts, the ag district, the neighborhood office and business district. And the final column are the more intensive business districts, including the industrial districts. And then we have a column that shows a picture of every row, every sign in this chart. And, let me give you an example of how this works. So every business property is allowed a freestanding sign. And you get a choice in most zoning districts of what kind of sign to use, a monument sign or a dual post sign. And you can see the picture of the dual post sign here, and the monument sign. And these area rules are, are pretty much what we have now. So this row isn't changing, except that we are not allowing new pylon signs. So this gives me an opportunity to talk about what I think is the most important part of the code. If you have a non-conforming sign, a sign that is up now, that the new code will make not permit it, you're allowed to keep it, and you're allowed to maintain it. And so the choice of that non-conforming sign coming down is the choice of the property of the village is not going to force anybody's hand. And that means that, that I think we have a little more flexibility to say, "prohibit new pylon signs," because we aren't affecting really the legality of any pylon sign that's up right now, that could stay.
Two questions for definition. Can you please tell me what ambient lighting is, and can you please define what a pylon sign is for me?
Yes. So a pylon sign is supported by one or two posts at the bottom edge. The pylon sign is supported by post, and the bottom edge is farther off the ground than what we would allow for the dual post sign, and off the top of my head, I think this is three feet. A maximum of three feet. Ambient lighting means natural lighting or lighting that's there from streetlights. It's no extra lighting.
Thank you.
Mike, question on the pylon signs. If it is non-conforming, and they just want to replace the faceplate, that's okay, even though it's non-conforming and it's a pylon sign?
Yes, and any other kind of sign that this code might make non-conforming. We don't have many in the village, but if we had a sign on a roof, again, that can stay, and will allow the, the owner of the sign. Allow the owner of the sign to alter the case of that sign, which will make it something that can be used for the long haul then.
Just hard to avoid.
Can we use that in the future on you, Mike?
I swear, we did have a new battery when we started.
Okay.
Alrighty. Can you hear me?
Nope.
He'll get it. There you go. Alrighty. So the freestanding sign category, people can replace those faces on those non-conforming pylon signs, and I think we have about twenty of those in the village. But all of the new signs from all of the new businesses have been conforming voluntarily. They've been these monument signs. And that seems to be the way that things are, are going. The second category are on-building signs, and they can be wall signs, awting signs, signs on a rigid canopy, a marquee, or a projecting sign that comes out perpendicularly from the building. And.
Mike?
Yes.
I'm sorry to take you back. I have, I have one quick question on monument signs.
Yes.
How would you treat the backside of the "Welcome to Oregon" sign on 138 as you come into town?
So that sign was, was approved under special provisions, and it's legal. But if it were not, that would be a billboard on the backside, because it's advertising off-site products or services.
It's okay.
It's okay in the future, because we approved it specially.
We had a lot of discussion on that, I don't know, like, three years ago, or whatever it was.
Good question. Okay. Those on-business signs, those are all allowed now, but we're going to not allow new projecting signs. And in exchange, we're, we're gonna allow more on-building signs. If you face a second street, you get extra signage over what the sign code does now. The way the sign code works now is you get so many square feet, and you can, you can distribute it throughout the site, but your freestanding sign counts against that, and window signs count against that. And that's not how this ordinance works, and the net result is more wall signs, but on, on second walls typically, where you might have a second street frontage.
So I have a quick question, Mike. I don't mean to be slowing you down, but, but you just prompted my mind.
Yeah.
What, what's the difference between a projecting sign and a suspended sign?
A suspended sign is hanging from a post, coming out from the wall, and a projecting sign is typically affixed by a bracket. We can maybe make that diagram a little bit more clear.
Yeah, I think that suspending sign is often under a canopy or an overhang, like something you'd walk under.
Isn't a blader suspended also not lit, and a suspended sign usually has an internal light source?
A projecting sign.
Yes.
Yes. So let's. So let's go to this next category, and I'll help explain this. So the next sign category, pedestrian signs, and we have blade signs and suspended signs. Those are two new categories. This is a whole new additional sign that's allowed. These are small signs affixed near the doorway, the pedestrian entrance of a building, and this is specifically meant for this on-sidewalk pedestrian traffic. And right now, these aren't permitted, so this is an extra kind of sign that we're allowing. And typically, people driving by aren't going to be able to really notice these signs. They're too small. And then finally, another new sign category, a daily notice sign. And these are for signs with changeable copy, and we allow them in different locations. And you get your pick, a menu board, which is on the wall, and you'll see these in larger cities, and they often have menus in them, but they don't have to. It could be a chalkboard with the daily specials, or at a store with the daily sales. And again, it's for those pedestrians who are walking down the street, and it's a chance to get advertising right there outside the building. That's an extra sign. Or you could do a sandwich board if you aren't blocking the sidewalk. And so you have to provide five feet of clear zone, and not many properties in the immediate downtown have that extra footage to spare. So they might need to do the menu board. That's an option for them still.
So when you say five feet of clear space, clear between where and where?
Typically between the front of the building and the outside edge of the sidewalk. Can't obstruct that. Could be the curb. Could be the curb, yeah. So again, partly because these sandwich boards, in some places, there's physically no place to put them. We wanted to allow those menu boards on the wall. And in fact, we offer a third kind of sign, a bulletin board sign, and that's typically on a post, and often you'll see that, or a double post, and often you'll see that in front of a church or a museum, something where there's a schedule of events or services. That's a third option that's available. And then finally, if you have a drive-through, you can do a drive-through sign, and you need a conditional use permit for that. So again, this bottom category, these daily notice signs, that's a new category. That's a new sign that's available for businesses, and we were responding to the desire to get some notification of sales or services, specials outside the building at a small scale. So we have a lot of footnotes, and you know, there are always exceptions or complications. But again, the idea is, is a new business, I can walk somebody through each one of these categories. You get choices, but this is all the information you really need to know. You don't have to crack open that sign code. It's all right here, and I think the pictures really help. And again, these formulas are essentially consistent with the ones in the current code. Let's go on to the next. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at, all of these signs have an asterisk behind them.
Yes.
With the exception of B5, the projecting sign, what's the significance of the asterisk?
Right. That's this, right? So it's this note that's right here, and we missed the asterisk. We need to put the asterisk there. And that just simply refers you to the definitions, if you want the formal definition of the sign. If you need something, like was asked about the difference between a monument sign and a pylon sign, the definition tells you that. So we missed the asterisk down at the bottom of the table there. So Jackie, could you take us to the next group? So the second group are the temporary business signs. And again, we're allowing some extra area. The first category are signs that are in the window, typically on the inside of the window. Right now, those count against the wall signs. We subtract that area from your business signage, your permanent business signage. Here, this would all be extra signage, and here, the main rule is you can cover no more than twenty-five percent of the window area. And originally, I had it as the window panes, but after the meeting with the chamber, we changed it to the area within the overall window frame, twenty-five percent. Second category is the temporary board and banner signs. These are the signs that I was talking about we allow now, forty square feet, two times a year for a month. It can be back-to-back if you want. And then finally, temporary approved development signs. So here we have the building and the platte signs that Jackie showed pictures of. And the only way we could figure out how to do it was to tie it to a building permit and to an active platte that's being sold. So what's triggering those two signs is an actual government action. And as I said, we can't control the content, but we have a pretty good idea what those signs will be used for. And we had to get creative on that category. There didn't seem to be any other way to do it, but I think we have a pretty good shot at how we did that.
Mike?
Yes.
Question for you. In this category, we're calling a temporary business sign category or group. But yet, Table A for the window sign, those can be permanent by nature, correct?
They can.
Okay.
Yeah, but we didn't want them to count against the wall signage. So I intentionally put them here to make that clear. Good point. There's no time limit on how long the window signs can be up. All right, any question about those?
I'm going to ask one question, even though I really want to ask the second one, but I don't want to be a stinker. Do you see any signs in the village right now that are in violation of this recommendation? And if so, are they grandfathered as well?
Let me think. We've had some comments that there may be a couple of uses in the shopping centers that have more than twenty-five percent window coverage. I haven't gone out and looked at that, so that might be the case. And I think those are grandfathered situations as long as those same window signs remain up. The board and banner signs, we're using the exact same rules. Now, I've seen locations in the village where board signs seem to be up more often than twice a year. But that's really an enforcement thing, not a change in the rule that we're talking about. The property across the street from Walgreens has a lot of signs on it all the time of all different kinds. So you know, that's an example of where there's some violations. And then this, we allow right now because we have a sign type called new subdivision sign. And that's content-based, right? So we had to figure out a new way to allow those. So these are happening now, but it's because we can call them out by the name in the current code. We had to figure out a different way to allow them.
And the category D prohibited signs, do you have any concerns there?
And those are the same signs that are prohibited now. Yep, same signs. So I think the main issue there are their signs in the right-of-way still. That's a never-ending struggle. Let's go with the next page, Jack. So here are the permanent miscellaneous signs, and when you think about it, remember that content basis has to be for a public good. Remember that? Protect the health, safety, and welfare, that public purpose. That's this page. So we have village-required signs. We require addresses. We want to allow for a building management plaque, particularly in rental properties. People want to put the contact information for the office building owner or the multifamily building contact or the management company. On-site warning signs, like no trespassing and no parking. In the current code, we just call them no trespassing and no parking, but we can't do that. So here, it's tied again to a village ordinance. And then onsite directional signs, and again, we think that there's a public safety benefit to those signs. You know, this way to the drive-through, do not enter one way, right? Those are important public safety signs to have. So we felt we could go ahead and make those content-based. And then Group B are miscellaneous signs, a metal plaque for an historic property. Got to allow that. A permanent platte sign, like a neighborhood name, and an institutional information sign. So that would be churches, schools, other large institutional uses, a library, gets a sign that is larger and can have an electronic reader board on it. We wanted to make provisions for that and make them easy. Right now, we do that as a community information sign in the side code. We feel this approach is more defendable, and we aren't discriminating against religion because churches have the same access as schools. There was another court case about that just last week. So I think we're in good shape there, and for the most part, we're preserving these rules. We just had to be more creative as how to allow them. And then the last page is where we had all of those kind of yellow highlights, where we needed a new approach because of the Supreme Court decision. And all those signs, garage sales, open house, house for sale, campaign signs, slogan signs, or yard signs. And so what we're allowing are three different kinds, and you see the little pictures, a stake sign. So that's typically the little metal or wood stakes, most campaign signs and garage sale signs, and open houses are those kind. Or a frame sign where you have the kind of angle iron or plastic, and you drop the sign face into it, a more sturdy, longer-lasting sign, or the arm and post sign that we often see for real estate. And here, we're saying, you know, you don't need a sign permit. You get one per site, and there's no time limit. So somebody could have one of these up of one kind or another all the time. And people don't do that typically, unless it's a slow-down-for-kids sign or some kind of slogan sign like that. So we're saying, most of the year, you get one of these. You get to choose which it is, except we felt that during election season, we needed to allow for more of these signs. And so if you look down at the bottom of the table in footnote four, we're suggesting that any number of yard signs is permitted thirty days prior to and two days after an election. And frankly, they could be used for anything. I mean, you could have fifty signs that said guns, 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 you know, if you wanted to, or peace, 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 you know. So we realize we're at a risk, you know. Under the content-based signs, we could just say campaign sign and allow for this, but we can't now. And in discussions between Matt and Jackie and I, and at the conference we spoke at, this was the concern, was that if we just allow one sign all year round and don't make a provision for campaign season, you know, that's likely to be the first challenge to this Supreme Court ruling. So kind of with deference to you all and your fellow candidates, we felt that instead of just allowing one, we needed to allow kind of a period where people could put a sign for every candidate in every referendum issue they wanted.
You're pandering.
Say?
You're pandering.
We are, we are. Because under the current code, you can do this. Under the current code, you can do this. And so we're just stuck, and the risk is that they won't be used for campaign signs. They'll be used for other temporary sign purposes. So we thought going into this, we needed to explore and figure out if this was going to work. And why not explore with something that is more consistent with what we have now rather than something that's really reactionary and makes people choose what one issue or person do they want to have on their lawn? So that's the overview of the code. The text is very different than the current code, but basically, the rules are the same. We just had to provide definitions broken into these categories. And more importantly, we had to clarify the rules for those signs that are up now so that it's clear they can keep the signs up and they can change the faces without having to bring them into conformity. So I've used that approach in most of the sign codes that I've used, and the nonconforming signs stay up for an average of forty more years after the code is adopted. I know, maybe it's more than forty years. I know it's forty years because the oldest sign code I wrote is like thirty-five years old, and those signs are still up. Middleton used an approach where if you change the sign face, the whole sign has to come into conformity. But that's a lot of extra money to create a whole new sign structure, and a lot of people will order that replacement face without checking the rules. And now they've invested in a new sign face, and you know, we might have to go up there and say, no, you got to take everything down now, and you know, I don't care if you just spent nine hundred dollars on that sign face. Now everything comes down, and you have to put up a conforming sign. So most of the times when I've written a sign code, it's been that you can change the face and you can keep the structure under repair, even though it's nonconforming. So somebody at the chamber asked me, how many nonconforming permanent signs are there out there? And I'm just going to say, I think there are twenty pylon signs, and I would imagine maybe in total, a hundred nonconforming signs. Some of them are window signs that might cover most of the window frame. That's an easy fix. But all of them can stay until they're taken down at the choice of the property owner. And I think that's one way for us frankly to get it enabled us to be more creative in responding to the Supreme Court decision because we were in a corner in some instances. So by keeping those existing signs legal, or pardon me, where you can continue to maintain them and replace the face, I think we're doing justice to the people who've already invested in those signs. John?
Things like homecoming, straw hat players in the windows of businesses downtown, those types of things. How is that looked at?
Okay, so this is how you could do that, is you could use the institutional information signs to make those events known. And you know, the village only has the one, and you know, most villages would have one downtown and then one on the north side as well, and most of the schools nowadays would have one in front of them. And you could put those kind of events on them. And then the problem is, most of the boards and banners historically have been used for those kind of events also, and we would have to make a decision whether that's off-site advertising or not. It's a tricky issue. So historically, they've been used that way. And you know, maybe the decision will be to continue to allow them to be used that way.
The grandfathering of the pylon signs, then, that stays with the property forever?
It stays with the property. It's not related to the business or the property owner. It runs with the property.
By the cemetery, whenever there's a sports team that goes to state, you see a series of signs off the right-of-way, maybe in the right-of-way.
Right, sometimes they're in the right-of-way, and sometimes they're kind of straddling the line. Sometimes they're in the right-of-way, and sometimes they're kind of straddling the line, and you have one foot in the cemetery. And those signs aren't legal. Those are illegal signs now. But, you know, they usually stay up until the game has been played, right? And I wouldn't expect that to change. I think that it's going to be hard to prevent people from putting those signs up. I think that one way to reduce the, kind of, the pressure to put those signs up is to have several more of these institutional information signs. But I realize that's going out of town, and it's a great message for the team as they head to the game, or to intimidate the other team as they head into town. So, I wouldn't be surprised if that practice, you know, continues.
The category markers on your thing, you have permanent business sign, temporary business sign, by using the word business, are we indicating something to do with content?
I think we're basing it based on the land use. These are signs for business land uses, and I think that's okay.
Because it's based on zoning district, right, Mike?
Right, zoning district, but the land use itself.
Permanent business signs are allowed in all of the zoning districts.
Right. It's based on the uses.
But it implies a business message, and we can't control it.
I think that's a really good point. So, Jackie, in the definition of that page, that category, we'll emphasize that it's based on the use, not about the content of the sign. Thank you for pointing that out.
The Supreme Court.
Any other questions?
I'm concerned about the historic property sign. And I'm thinking in particular of the water tower, where I believe there are at least two signs, but you have a limit of one. Is that going to be an issue?
No, that's, I don't think it's going to be an issue. That's a good point. These metal plaques are expensive, and you don't get really any advertising room. I don't see a problem with allowing more than one. Would you guys be comfortable with allowing an historic property to have more than one of those plaques?
So, you're saying we change the table?
I think we could change the table and allow more than one. And this won't be perfect. They're never perfect. And practices will evolve, and so, we'll adopt it, and undoubtedly, maybe through Judy's members, or Jeff, when he's out there picking up signs in his car. We'll learn how we need to make adjustments. But we think that by generally staying consistent with the rules and the formulas that we have, and trying to find a way for every sign that's out there now, one way or another, we're starting at least in a position where we will minimize the number of adjustments we need to make. I'd like to say, you know, it would have been easier to see how another community responded to this Supreme Court decision, but I think we're first out of the blocks. For the last couple of weeks, I've spent several hours on each weekend looking for other communities. And I think we're there right at the tip of the spear, so to speak. And it's because we were all the way through the code to begin with. So, just to recap then, we heard some good suggestions. Please send me your questions or comments if something occurs to you after today. We'll go back to the Plan Commission in January, then go to the Chamber for a post-Supreme Court decision presentation. Oh, I forgot to mention, and Jackie, I don't think we have it, do we have the translation guide? I put one more page together. It's kind of the fifth page. And what it says, I want this kind of sign, what do you call it in the tables, and where can I find it? So, I want to put up an open house sign, how do I do that? Or a slowdown-for-kids, or a garage sale. So, we call it a translation key, because that's really what it's doing. We're trying to make it user-friendly. So, we'll go back to the Chamber, and then we'll go back to the Plan Commission, and hopefully, get it in final shape, get ready to go to public hearing sometime in the summer. And what I hope to do is have, you know, two or three months where we can have the code in final form and just pretend we're applying it, and just get an idea of how it would work once it's actually in effect. And then, I should ask, do you like the idea of a delayed effective date? Kind of a several-month period where we know as of a certain date, the code's going to take effect, and we can get the publicity out to that effect?
It would make sense to me, Ray Ossfield's.
We did that with the zoning code and the zoning map, and I think that helped with that.
I think it's just really, I know this is your baby, so to speak, the way you put this, and it's nice, it's going to be really efficient for the village to use, as opposed to the old way of looking through ordinance and trying to figure them out. It's a very nice, condensed, creative way to do it.
Well, thank you for your patience tonight, and our board is, we'll be with you in a few more minutes.
Thanks, Mike and Jackie.
Thanks, both of you. I appreciate your thoroughness on this.
Okay. Any other business? You guys first.
Okay. So, any motion to adjourn the Village Board?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. The motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Good job.